At this like a time I like to entertain emotion.
I move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement for um. I will try and talk as close as I can. I move that we approve the purchase and sale agreement subject to the modifications or as amended, I should say, with James Long for a number of parcels in the industrial park.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Approved.
And the purchase and sale will be available when the modifications are made.
Mr. Lambert. The purchase and sale.
The purchase and sale will be available when it is amended to reflect the edits that were made in executive session. Does this work any better?
I think some of the problem. I think it's the air conditioner too, but you don't want to shut that off. Can you hear me?
Alright, Mr. Lambert.
Madam President, I make a motion that we move Section B Public Hearings and Public Presentations by James Long and Blue Sphere Corporation be taken up before the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Mr. Long. Presentation of an indoor-outdoor sports complex at the industrial park. This is what we just signed the sales and purchase for.
We just asked Mr. Long to come just to give the public a brief synopsis of what he's planning on that land.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Our goal is to build a 120,000 square foot indoor sports arena. It's going to have four fields. We're going to specialize in volleyball, soccer, hockey, basketball. It will also house a, we're teaming up with Ryan's Amusement, 3,000 square foot arcade. We're going to have a 4,000 square foot bouncy house. We are going to have a family restaurant. And we're going to have a gym and fitness center. Our goal is to team up with the town with the 20 acres outside these lots to open them up for walking trails and then maybe get into the Tough Mudders and Spartan Races. So.
And the town council is very excited about this. We've been working on this for a year and a half now. And we're very happy, more than that probably.
Longer than that.
And we're very happy that this did take over. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Blue Sphere Corporation, Charlotte, North Carolina, regarding waste-to-bio-gas presentation.
Thank you very much.
Like you can sit in.
I'm sorry?
If you prefer, you could sit there. It's up to you.
This is okay if everybody can hear me. City Council, we're very pleased to have you invite us to make a presentation in front of you and all the residents of Tiverton. Thank you so much. We have a brief corporate presentation about our proposal and proposed project. And I'll ask Chris to go to the first slide. Chris Hammer is of course with the Food Engineering. You know him. He's done work for the city before. Blue Sphere Corporation is a public company and so we have a disclaimer that we add at the beginning of our presentations. Sorry about that.
Would you like to try to do it without the air conditioner and open the door? Somebody want to shut the air conditioner? I think that's part of the problem in the back.
Next slide.
That might help.
Very good. The project that's being proposed is a 3.2 megawatt food waste-to-energy project. The company overview is essentially as follows. We're a clean energy company and we develop and own and acquire organics-to-energy projects. The market is keen for this kind of a thing. In the United States, there are only about 250 to 300 anaerobic processes and installations. In Europe, there are over 15,000. Reason why there's such disparity is because in the United States, of course, we've had other sources of energy and we've had available land. The technology in the States is still developing. In Europe, it is probably fifth-generation technology. What we look to do is to do projects in the United States and since the beginning of the year, Blue Sphere Corporation has initiated two food waste-to-energy projects. One in Charlotte, North Carolina. That was just started in January. And we have a project in Johnson, Rhode Island that is already underway. We're having a groundbreaking the day after tomorrow. And we invite those on the council and the city to join us on that site. It will start at 10:30 in the morning and you will get a chance to see at least one phase of an operation starting. We have a unique position in this market because of the team that we have. We have a technology provider which will introduce and we'll make a presentation following this. What we'll do is ask to have the questions. We'll wait for the questions after both presentations and then open it, of course, to the council and anyone else who would like to ask a question. Next slide. As I mentioned, we are a build, own, operator. The two plants in the United States that we've started are both projects that involve development and they've both been initiated. The particular subset of anaerobic digestion, food waste-to-energy. In the States, there were really only two other food waste-to-energy plants. Both of those were in California. One was 3 megawatt, one was under a megawatt. So when we started our 5.2 megawatt plant in Charlotte, that more than doubled the total size. And starting in Johnston means that we have doubled the total amount of plants underway. We have and are acquiring assets overseas, also organic-to-energy. Next slide. There are several ways that methane gas is produced. We say biogas. Landfills produce biogas just through decompensation of organic waste. Of course, anaerobic digestion, which is a technology that we're talking about today, produces this gas. And also wastewater treatment produces it. Depending on the quality of the biogas, it can be used for a number of different purposes. On the slide, we see residential and industrial use. Use to power cars and buses and trucks. It can be used as a heat source, burned and heat provided. And of course, the proposal that we're making is that it be burned in a generator and produce electricity. Next slide. The market is quite strong right now for this and a number of sectors of the US land is becoming scarce. Landfills are becoming full. And your neighbors have been enacting some legislation that prohibits food waste if it's over a certain kind of capacity, maybe 100 tons per day from being taken to landfills in the future, but rather being dealt with in some other way. Reason being because it takes a long time to decompose in the landfill. The methane gas is produced and seeps into the atmosphere or it can be collected and burned. And it is a hazard and an untidy way really to deal with food waste. The things that affect these types of projects, of course, is they are expensive. They are a technology that has to be managed properly. It's a chemistry. And it is a chemistry and a technical issue to manage the sites so that they perform properly and the equipment can function properly and optimally. Next slide. A number of the different technologies used to deal with waste, of course, is heat or combustion. And we can burn or compost organics. There are reasons against that, of course, that we know. And then we've got technologies that use this bacteria, other organisms to produce gas from waste and that's what we're talking about today. There are a number of ways to make an economic model work with this type of a technology. There is a feed-in tariff and that is a long-term contract with a utility company, usually at least 15 years. So the utility company promises to buy power from a project like this for that period of time. There's a tipping fee and that'd be the same as taking trash to a public landfill. In this case, it would be food waste to this site and the haulers pay for leaving that food waste with us. So that's a second source of income generation. There is heat generated by the process in addition to electricity and that can be sold. And then finally, there's compost that is the byproduct of this process. And that can be sold off. It's high in nitrates, can be used as fertilizer. Conceptually, the idea is to take this waste in and essentially have no residue left over. The digestate, which is the only residue, is going to be sold for fertilizer. There is some wastewater treatment that, of course, goes into the sewer system. But there is no buildup of any kind of a landfill or of any kind of a some other materials that have to be processed or treated. It's totally consumed. Everything's totally consumed on the site. In terms of percentages of revenue, the feed-in tariff and the tipping fee represent about the same amount of revenue in the model. And the compost is usually sold off. It's usually 8% of the process and that's sold off. It represents about 5% of the total revenue. Next slide. There are also other ways that incentives are being provided for this kind of technology. There are renewable energy certificates or RECs. In Charlotte, the feed-in tariff would normally be lower and the state provides these renewable energy credits. And what that does is requires the utility to pay a few more pennies in the way that they buy the electricity from us. In that way, of course, the utility can meet certain standards in terms of conforming to being and providing all the people green energy. And so there's guidelines that are set up and these RECs are used in a way to manage that. You can have RECs for both electricity and heat. There are subsidies and tax credits. There are investment tax credits that are allowed for these types of projects. Financing, there are attractive incentives and lower interest loans that are available for these kinds of things. And then there are also renewable energy standards where governments will place requirements within certain areas and on utilities to ensure that a fraction of the energy that they produce is produced using a green energy method. Next slide. Blue Sphere's operation and business model is the build, own, operate. And that's what we would be proposing here, build, own, operate for Tiverton. That is what we've done in Charlotte and that's what we're doing over in Johnson, which you would see on Thursday if you join us. The acquisition of operational waste-to-energy plants is being conducted overseas. We just, there was a press announcement just recently, within the last two weeks, for the acquisition of two, of four projects from Canexia, a public company in Italy. And we plan to close those plants within the next 60 days. We're also looking in areas surrounding Italy for additional operations to buy. And we're concentrating on those kinds of projects that value can be added. Those kinds of things that we can come in and fine tune and through methods of operation and acquisition, make the projects better in the community and better for those that are selling to us. Finally, the third item is landfill gas to energy facilities. We are working with partners to take the situation of landfill gas. And currently, that gas is either resides in the landfill and escapes into the atmosphere or it is piped off and flared. Or it can be harvested and burned in a generator and produce electric power. And we also have activities that we're looking at right now for that kind of technology. The 5.2 megawatt plant that we mentioned in Charlotte, you can see a couple of the bullet points regarding that plant. The PPA, which is the Power Purchase Agreement, I said there were long-term contracts with the local energy provider, in that case Duke Energy. Construction cost for that plant was 27 million. It's in construction. It usually takes about a year to construct, 10 months to a year. The energy production is going to start in the fourth quarter of 2015. The feedstock, and that's what we call everything that's being used to put into the digesters, is organic waste. The compost is sold to third parties that's used for fertilizer. The expected annual revenues on the 5.2 megawatt plant are 8.5 million a year and the project IRR and additional information there. We have a funding and equity partner and that is Entropy Management Services, Inc. And they are a component of York Capital Group. York Capital is, their size is about $28 billion and they are a quite well-known fund. Next slide, please. The project that we're mentioning on Thursday that we're having our groundbreaking for is the 3.2 megawatt facility in Johnston. We would envision the site here in Tiverton to mirror this top-of-the-structure 3.2 megawatts, 15-year power purchase agreement with National Grid. All of that would have to, of course, be put in place. There are requests for proposals going out for different people to come in and make proposals for PPAs and we anticipate to be part of that kind of an application. We've got a number of those coming up immediately, as a matter of fact. The construction costs will be between 10 and 20 million. On that side, it's 20 and it's currently in construction, as we said. The feedstocks are the same. Because we're starting almost simultaneously with the Charlotte facility, the start date's going to be the same. Compost, everything mirrors that except that it's about a 60 to 65% reduction in the 5.2 megawatt parameters. The project pipeline and this presentation is a little more for some of the folks that are interested in us and our investors. But we are projecting a chart, of course, that reflects some of the recent success that we've had and those things that we're doing right now in terms of growth. But it talks about the four facilities in Italy I just mentioned and a number of the other ones that we currently are looking at. We've got the AD projects in development and not only do we have other projects that we are working on in the United States, but also Caribbean and overseas. In the last category, the landfill gas-to-energy projects, we have some activities active right now in Southeast United States. Our partners, as I mentioned, are York Capital, Duke Energy, and National Grid. Duke Energy in Charlotte, National Grid here in Johnston. And usually a big obligatory picture cast of characters. We're working on Roy maybe to get a more smiley face there for that one for the next presentation. But the company is about eight people strong and the next part here we have is the value proposition. In talking with Mark, one of the things he mentioned is that, of course, the council and the city would like to know how many jobs are created. The thing we remember is number one, this is not so much a large job creator, it only takes maybe a half a dozen people to run the plant. In terms of activity in the area, there would probably be, say, 30 truckloads a day of food waste coming into the plant. The point is that this is really a value generator rather than a job generator. The estimated taxes on the plant would be approximately $200,000 a year on a 3.2 megawatt plant. We'd have a continuous revenue, as you see, in the various things relative, at least to the strength of the company. You see the $700,000 a year for the four plants that we just acquired overseas. Our geographical market is focused, mostly development-type things in the US, again, because there are less plants to acquire here. And in Europe, it's a more developed and mature market. And we have a number of activities overseas in various countries that have recognized the progress we've made so far. And would like to, and have invited us to their cities to make presentations. Next slide. Finally, we'd like to invite you all to our groundbreaking tomorrow in Johnston. We've got an event planned for 10:30. And we would invite the council and, of course, residents of Tiverton to come join us. At this time, I'd like to introduce our technology provider and Alex Missoni, the CEO, will introduce the rest of his team. But he will be talking to you in a little more detail about the specific technology. Alex?
Yes. Good evening. Do you hear me like this? Good. May I?
Sure.
Okay. So my name is Alex. I am the CEO of a company named Austin. And we are a technology provider. We are the engineering procurement infrastructure and the supplier of the technology for these plants. It has been introduced and explained in by Gary. And we are partnering with Blue Sphere and we are partnering also with Chris for the great engineering especially for Rhode Island. So basically, my presentation is to describe what are we talking about. And in a few words, what you will see can be summarized in we are doing something which, of course, naturally, but in a closed reactor. You will see it in the next slide. So the idea is to have waste to biogas in order to fulfill, to obtain environmental sustainability. Energy production from waste has many advantages. Basically, waste, you have a problem if you handle it, but if you can transform, if you could transform it into energy, then it's a natural process. Because we are talking about something which is already, nature is doing by itself. It's easy with biological. So it's biological. You have massive amount of waste worldwide. Here in the States, in Europe, everywhere basically. It's available. It's easy. It's available. And it contains high value of energy. So which kind of waste could be used? Maybe the answer is not superior, but anything that contain carbon. So if you want to have, to transform biologically with the natural bacteria that you find in the environment, waste it has to, how can I say? It has to rot. So it has to start to ferment. Examples. Natural farm. Farms. Farms has a manure from cows, from pigs. This, if you can see, typically daily farm produce 100,000 pounds of manure every day. So it's a lot of, it is daily farm. And then you have 6 billion of pounds of food waste, which is, has to be disposed. I'm talking about food waste, not manure. In, into that field everybody. This is where we are now sending and we are sending, we're talking about Europe and we're talking about the US. Exactly the same problem. Basically, now it makes a lot of problems with all those regulations. When we collect, these are some figures that you have in the US, 100 million tons of waste energy. And this could be transformed into energy. I'm not talking about plastic. I'm talking about organic waste. Fuck if you continue to pollute, but if you send the organic waste to landfill, it will start to ferment in the landfill when it is still open. So you lose all the methane that we're going to the atmosphere causing the greenhouse effect, which is causing flooding like Texas. What's happened there, you've seen it. It was not very nice. And landfill produces a huge amount of odors. How can we do it? But this is what we are talking about, what we are developing together. And the idea is to have closed tanks where the bacteria can go and transform it. How many minutes do we have? It will shorten it. So this will reduce air, water, and soil pollution. Anaerobic digestion is the picture you have seen it just before. We are feeding it with sludge and manure, food, and in some cases, mainly in Europe, but here we are talking about food. We also use some crops and residues, but here we are talking about waste. Anaerobic digestion. Then anaerobic digestion is producing two things. One is biogas and one is digestate. Digestate could be transformed in fertilizer, in topsoil, which could be used for salt, is used for horticulture, used for agriculture, could be used also for growing the grass for growth. Biogas could be directly burned to produce electrical energy and heat. There are lots of farmers that in Europe has its anaerobic digestion and they use the swimming pool during the winter time. The bioheating is also another possibility you upgrade. So you clean up better the biogas, then you transform it, you can inject it to the grid or send, use it as a transport fuel. These are some of other plans that we own and own and all and we are with waste. Do you can see? I'm sorry. Just wanted to show you a short video. You can have it also on YouTube. Sorry. Started making that going. I'll shorten it so that you can see very briefly. You see? So you see basically, this is the top of the digestor. There are some mixers that are keeping the bacteria in feeding together with the, with the feeding. So the bacteria will eat the waste, but transform it into biogas and soil and fertilizers. The gas is taken from this dome and then sent it to a burner, to a CHP, so a combined heat and power motor. And it's transformed into electrical energy. This is how the pipes, this is the way how to clean it, we clean the gas. But you are more interested, you will see in Europe. So our base, base headquarters in Italy, just a very good presentation, we have offices in Korea, here in the US, in Bulgaria. in Korea, here in US, in Bulgaria, and we are developing also some of our plants which are young. And then we have also two subsidiary which are producing cog generators and handling system for heavy duty consumers. You have a very good presentation, but I just want to say that we follow from day to day, from the starting, the construction and the operation mechanisms. So that we will follow the plan and there it's starting and execution up to the end. We don't want to lose anything unattended because we want to be sure that we're producing, it will work properly, the work right. Our technology, we are doing several things. And here you can see some pictures of the cog generator system and of the video which is a system that transforms and cleans up all the waste, the organic waste to remove roots, parts, plastic parts, inorganic like metal parts from organic. Well, these are some figures that you have already seen, so I am going very fast. These are some pictures of the construction in Charlotte. It's just adding, which is we will treat one hundred and, about one hundred and sixteen thousand tons a year of waste, while just we will treat seventy two thousand tons a year of waste. Thank you very much for listening to me and if you have any questions, we are here to ask.
Any questions for the council?
I have a few if I could. I didn't see any pictures of the tipping floor or that portion of the operation. What I was interested in is how, where the trucks unload? That'd be the first question I had. Is there any information on that? Do you have any slides or anything on that?
Um, yes. If I could jump ahead. If you indulge me for one minute, I'll go through.
Okay.
Tibbetson slide.
Well, I'm interested in the tipping floor operation because I think, I understand the digesters are self-contained. You want to make sure that everything's in that digest is collected because that's your usable natural gas product.
Yes.
But it's before, when the trucks come into the tipping floor, that operation, is that also a negative pressure building?
Yes, it is.
With the dipping, because we, let me explain, we had looked at operations years ago, a company called Bedminster, I don't know if you're familiar, they do reclaim landfills. And then there are operations where they take landfill and do some pretty similar to what y'all are doing, make the methane. Some kind of interest in the process, but they had a system in the building where it was a negative pressure, but then the air that was in the building went out through what they call the biofilter.
That's what we have.
It's the same type of system?
One issue which is very important, the arrival, the building where the waste is arriving and is fed has to be in a negative pressure.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, the odors has to get out. But if you get it as with a negative pressure means that the odors are suck it and has to be set some grass. So you need first a washing tower and then for finishing a life filter. If you don't have a washing tower upfront, you will have always issues with the biofilter because the odors may vary during the period of the year, which may be more stronger during summertime because the fermentation starts faster. Basically, there is higher temperature, everybody knows it.
Yes, it has been thanks to previous, and I think that's part of the problem particularly in the summer.
You have to clean it up first, so you need a scrubber which will do the heavy part of the job. And all the water that is in the scrubber will then with the, of your tanks, will send back again to the anaerobic and then will be treated. The rest, the residual odors has to go, will go through a life filter and then the emission then will be fully cleaned and there will be no odors.
Second question is, how long does the feedstock actually stay in the digesters?
The feedstock stays in, well, these kind of digesters, you can have two types of digesters. Mesophilic, which, which means I'm guessing.
Eighty to ninety days. And mesophilic?
Yes, I'm guessing fifty five, how much is the, I'm sorry, I'm using Celsius.
One hundred.
No, okay. There is mesophilic and then thermophilic. We are looking at thermophilic, so one hundred and twenty Fahrenheit, which has two advantages. One is that you go faster in the degradation and basically is when you have to remove from your soup, you want to remove some of the grease which is in the soup, we let it cool down and all the grease will come out. Why? Because at lower temperature, the grease will dissolve less. So we want to increase the temperature because the bacteria will not work eating only a very thin layer of grease. We want grease in the mixture. So if we have it high temperature, then it means will dissolve faster and it will be degraded.
So.
It will be thirty to forty days.
Thirty to forty days. And how many digesters would be on for? Just wanting, how long does it take? Can you load a digester for like two weeks prior? I just, just wondering, if the trucks are coming in every day, how many digesters do you need?
Yes.
You know, and then so you don't have a stockpile.
If you have a cow and you expect to get to make every day, but you feed once every two weeks, in Monday, the cow will die. So it's exactly the same story. The bacteria cannot be overloaded.
So you add it in each day.
So what you are doing is, I showed you a equipment, piece of equipment, which is a tornado. You get all the rubbish, you get all the waste, you treat it daily. So always it is coming in, we treat it daily, but you are feeding to the digester, not all of it, but you're accumulating from Monday to Friday or to Saturday afternoon, you're accumulating a part that you will treat from Saturday afternoon to Monday morning, next week.
Oh, I know they assume that they had a sort of, the ones I saw, the sort of zone that I turned, so you had a continuous process like you talked about, what is it mean? Would the compost be crabs immediately and sent out in bags or would it be sent out in?
Hmm, please, nobody, the compost will come out, it will be like, like normal, it could be bags, but.
No, I mean, I mean, I mean, how?
It's more an economical energy.
So there'd be a accumulation of compost, it would be moved out by truck once you hit a certain aisle?
Yes.
Okay, so you wouldn't be processing it with the bags and sending it out in a bag ready for storage or anything like that? Would be sold in bulk?
Ah, could be, could be. It's basically, you know, with other things, chips or whatever and sold.
Oh, I didn't know how far this was going to go because I know some plants actually do put it right in the bags and put it in the Kmart and things like that.
Ah, it's insane possibilities. One, for example, in Korea, just to go exactly opposite of the world, in Korea, they have, there is an island where they have twenty nine golf clubs. And they need huge amount of composting, so they are looking for begging, taking the building into bags so that they can plant it in soil to grow the, to grow grass and also pelletizing it.
So you would depend on market.
But it's important to say that it's odorless. The digester will come down from the digesters are odorless because it's already been fermented and the gas was already being used.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I just, Chris, I sounded like you would walk us through a site a little bit.
Yeah, I would like to present the council with a unique opportunity that they have, that you've supported since at least thirty years ago, having industrial park within your town. And recently, as twenty twelve, Dupree Engineering was hired to look at alternatives to develop the industrial park, you know, with a grant through the Department Chamber of Commerce. Initially, Dupree Engineering looked at a maximum buildout given the industrial zoning that is on site, a forty thousand square foot minimum lot size, one hundred and twenty foot of frontage. We looked at how many buildable lots that we could achieve and at the time it was maximized at sixty six lots, six thousand feet of roadway. We took that plan and we permitted it through DEM. This was a model that was very successful at Quonset to pre-permit these sites so that when a new industrial park user comes in, they can accelerate their building permit process, they can utilize the existing stormwater permits that were in place through DEM and they could modify them so that'd be a quicker turnaround with a power plant, with the power purchase agreement requirements to enter the grid within a specific time of year, period of time rather, twelve month period of time normally. This has a great advantage for this, for this site. The site is pretty much undeveloped at this point, the Tibbetson Power Plant is shown on the aerial photograph, the remaining Progress Road, three thousand feet of Progress Road exists. The site is wooded. All the pre-permitting that we have done has located the wetlands within the site. Those areas are to be protected under any development condition. There is water that exists within Progress Road that runs to the power plant. There's a sewer pump station that exists on Industrial Way. The site was allocated five hundred thousand gallons of sewer flow and over two hundred thousand gallons of water flow for the entire site. When we look at what is being proposed now, about a hundred and seventy acres, we're looking at an eighty capitol that would be optimal for the power plant. And locating within the national grid lines, right next to national grid lines is another optimum location for the proposed biogas plant. It's tucked away from any views from Route twenty four. There are wetlands that would isolate any development or any views from the north, there is wetlands to the south. The power plant itself, the dwarf, this proposed biogas plant.
Chris, while you're up there, would you mind pointing out where the site for the sports complex is in relation to that? There you go.
Yeah, I had, I had, wait to your agenda. I thought the search show was going to be approved tonight, but thankfully it was for the recreation center. This is very compatible use to the biogas plant for a number of reasons. One, this is a maximum buildout, a hundred, two hundred and fifty car parking area, a hundred and thirty thousand square foot, I think Jim said it was a hundred and twenty thousand square foot that is now being proposed. Ice rate in the front, the access is along Industrial Way to the site, it's not using Progress Road at all right now for an entrance way, there might be a future walking and soccer field and, what am I trying to say, the juggle type gym courses, but all of that's isolated from the biogas plant. The biogas plant is all contained, self-contained within this area. Access for the thirty trucks, as Gary had said, would be totally different from the access of the recreation center. Industrial Way, of course, would be utilized as a common location, but it would be a compatible use. This is, this is an odorless plant next to the parking area, the recreation area, the outdoor activities that would be proposed. So it is something, and also wind turbines have been discussed in different scenarios and I've talked to the recent developer of wind turbines, he was looking at the most certainly boundary of the site. So if that, if that were to come to fruition, this also would not affect any future development of that use, that energy use. So that's, those are the two things that I considered. Back to the invitation. So essentially, to permit this site, one, it has an ideal use, it's a zoned use. We would work with the town council like any particulars, they would like, we'd have to work with the DEM over at least a twelve month period to, one, revise the stormwater permit, two, get an air quality permit, a noise permit, all the, all the protection of the environment would have to be demonstrated. We'd work with the planning board, the zoning board, if you will, to gain all those permits, to gain all that acceptance, to fully vet out this use. You've seen an overview tonight, but our experience in Johnston has been very positive. The town has embraced it as a compatible use within their industrial park area and we have that groundbreaking that's scheduled for Thursday. So if there's any, any questions, we'd be happy to.
I have one more, Chris. Air quality permit, that deal with particular or is that deal with order as well?
Orders, mainly orders. The various issues that you had raised, were the intakes rough?
I've been a long time since I read about it, I'm assuming it's even stricter now. Thank you.
What is the noise level from this plant? Is it a glove to process when it?
No, basically, there is, the only tension or noise is the CHP, but it's fully contained with noise insulation, which is controlled during the construction, is checked. We feed the motor with a normal natural gas and we measure the noise which is outside and it's usually very minimal. Nobody sees or hears if it is running or not. You have to go and check on the video.
Matt, did you?
No, I think you answered some of the questions about permitting. And I think that's probably sufficient, wasn't enough detail. I just would say for notification of all gathered here, that the wind proposal was a no-go.
Okay. Thank you.
And just one question, how long did it take for Johnston from like start to basically the construction begin date? How long did that process take with the state and?
That was very similar. We had also pre-permitted that site, the landowner had seen the advantage from a marketing or a value point of view, pre-permit the site and it was a ten month period. Go through planning, zoning, there were no town council actions required for groundbreaking. It's been ongoing the last, the last month.
Does, Chris, does a project of this size require the approval or any input from the energy facility siting board? Or is it under the cap?
I'm sorry, I'm.
I'm sorry, could you say that a lot of?
It has a DCC agreement.
No, I said, the, the, what island, whenever we've talked about energy facilities, there's been this energy facility siting board always referenced as sort of the over, as sort of the top level estate that whenever an energy facility is cited, that they have some hand in citing and administration. Is that, is that only for things above a certain megawatt or? I'm getting a blank stare, so I imagine there's not going to be.
Megawatt.
Yeah, it's not gonna, okay.
Any other questions for the council?
I have a question on the operation of it. How does the material get to you? Do you contract with local supermarkets, local restaurants? How does that happen?
I can take that, the, there are haulers and suppliers that have contracts with, you know, for pickup and we contract with them unless we have a, you know, very large food processor that we'd be able to bring with us and take, you know, what they have directly. So there are a number of different sources, but the haulers are the people we generally contract with. contract with.
Haulers, okay. Could you elaborate on the haulers, like meaning?
It would be the trash haulers that pick up the waste from food processors and, you know, operate in a long-term contracts with them. When we sign contracts with them, we go for say a five to ten-year contract, the kind of material they have to bring us is very well specified. It has to be, it has to be received within certain kinds of tolerances so that it will match the chemistry of the site. So it is a process that is a bit different and a little more sophisticated than just trash pickup. And they're equipped for this kind of thing and they're also equipped to stand behind long-term contracts to guarantee the tipping fees that we use in the revenue model we have.
Now, these haulers would be all within Rhode Island, correct?
Correct.
So when we talk about that, it's, it's less sort of the traditional bagged municipal solid waste and it's a more, because I would imagine you would have to pick through that and it would be an unreasonably prohibitive process. So you're talking about.
It would be separated from hard and inorganic.
Yeah, okay.
But even, it can still come to us in a certain kind of way, for instance, packaging, these things can be de-packaged.
Yeah.
And with some of the equipment that Alex and his team and company have, that can be processed so that a lot of the work is done so that just the food waste comes in. That's the only thing we're looking for.
Basically, you have soil-separated organics, that's from restaurants, from large or expired products which has to be sent to landfill and then the tornado machine depackaged automatically. Still, in the soil-separated organics, you can find lots of inorganic material that has to be taken. It's automatically separated by them. It's a, it's a large squeezer. You're squeezing your orange, you get the juice, you throw away the beer.
The only reason I mention that is because Stop &amp; Shop is in the process right now of putting in their own bio to gas out in Freetown.
You are right.
That's Massachusetts, so we're not crossing the state line. Our company is somewhat involved with that as well, division, division leader, Joe Penner.
Questions about the trucks? The thirty trucks are going to be every day?
That's what's estimated.
Every day? And do you have any hours of operations with the trucks or are they just going to come whenever?
Yeah.
How does that work?
It's throughout the day, it's postulated. It's not at a rush hour type of thing, so it's again a compatible use for the infrastructure coming onto the site, intersection of Industrial Way and.
Physical.
It's not a, this type of activity. When we permitted the sixty-six watts that was being contemplated, the potential for that amount of volume tend to the site, Commonwealth engineers were instrumental in proving that intersection at that time. This is far less than what the quantity was.
Are there any questions about the process and the next steps? Of course, we would have to have your approval not only to go forward with this, and there is some work underway to try to establish land value because we would have to put a contract on the land under a letter of intent. But also, we would need your support continuing. We would be going for a power purchase agreement and of course, all the other things that we would need, so it wouldn't be in one time measure of support, it would be a continued partnership with our company to see the project go through completion and success.
I just have a couple, a couple of quick questions. The first question I have is based on, you know, what does the structure of the deal look like in Rhode Island versus North Carolina for tax credits or subsidies?
Actually, they're very similar. The, you know, the tax, the investment tax credit was extended through the end of 2016. We were pushing the project forward to be completed, both projects really by the end of 2015, before this got passed. It gives us some latitude, although both of the completion dates are more dictated by the PPAs. But what that says is that these projects and this project would be feasible going forward because they have the opportunity for the ITC if we're brought on in 2016. As Chris said, it would take, you know, nine months to maybe a year for the permitting. If we didn't have some of the advanced work that he, his team and his company has already done in this regard, it would take longer and it would, it might put us even outside the range of a possibility for it. But it can be constructed in twelve months and if the permitting process can be twelve months or less, then that, that gives us the window that we.
Is that an annual appropriation?
No, oh, you asked one other thing about, about the incentives. There are no recs in Rhode Island, so, you know, that is not something that we would have, but the tip, but the power purchase agreement, okay, is strong enough to support that economic side, okay? And then also, one thing that is different from North Carolina at least is the tipping fees. The tipping fees are a lot higher here and as I said before, it's because governances are taking legislation where permitting this kind of, they are prohibiting this kind of waste from being dumped in landfills anymore. So the haulers are looking for places to take this and it's driving the process up.
My last question is, what impact, and talking about these incentives, what impact on the financial feasibility of the model do those have? Is it a fairly negligible amount or is it, is it a real substantial amount that?
It's a really, it's a very good question and I would give you, I would give you an example. When I said we were working on projects, landfill projects in Georgia, for instance, we were looking to do a food waste energy project there and even landfill gas to energy, which is a simpler form. You already have the bio, you know, the methane gas coming out of the ground, what you have to do is drill the wells and, you know, move it and burn it and produce electricity. But in dealing, for instance, with Georgia Power, the cost per kilowatt hour for their PPA is so low that it makes it impractical, impractical to go and do some of those things. And they're federally regulated and they have to take their avoided cost. They just came out streaming the nuclear power plant and there are a lot of reasons why there is no economic incentive in Georgia for this kind of thing. So it is regional, in the case of a national grid, they will pay higher for the takeoff, the energy takeoff. In reality, it would not be possible if it weren't for the recs for thermal and recs for the electric that essentially Duke Energy pays for. So state by state, you're right, I mean, it sort of dictates the climate under which these things can happen.
Right, okay. The last question was just, there was mention of cogeneration. I presume that's, that's waste to energy and natural gas?
Well, what?
Or I suppose it could be a number of things, but.
No, it's waste to energy through, through biogas, you burn the bad gas.
So where's, where's the co part of the cogeneration component?
You can reduce heat and electric.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Theoretically supply, you know, two possible needs.
Okay, but you're not thinking about that here?
No, it's available, but it's not.
It's available, but you'd have to have a buyer, you know, a customer.
It's not going to be the economic model, but it's justified.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions from the council? Okay, thank you gentlemen. I'm going to take a five-minute break while they're cleaning up.
Madam President, could I make a request? I don't think that Jim Moore was prepared to make a full presentation concerning the sports complex, but he did, as I recall, provide Kate and Mark with some brochures and magazines and light which would depict what this complex would look like. So please don't take the material with you, but if Mark and Kate could put it together, it would give you some ideas to what we're talking about.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Just take a five-minute break while they're cleaning up.